All right, we're going to get this meeting started. Welcome to our June 9th meeting. As you can see, my fellow council members are going to be videoconferencing in tonight, per usual. Hopefully, we won't have to do that much longer, but we got to stay safe. And I have our city manager and city attorney eight feet from me on either side. And we don't have masks on, but I can assure you, when we leave this dais, we wear our masks throughout City Hall. So we are remaining safe in that respect. So if you'd all join me, we're going to go to the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's put our hands over our hearts. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Ms. Rodriguez, if you'd give us the roll call, please.
Councilmember Engler?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Pro temp, Bill De La Peña?
Present.
Mayor Adam?
And I'm here as well. Thank you. Well, let us go to our city manager, Mr. Drew Powers, and we're going to get our COVID-19 update, if you please.
Thanks, Mayor Adam. Wanted to provide everyone a brief update tonight as to where things stand in regards to COVID-19 in Ventura County. A look at the numbers as of tonight with the latest numbers just out. We have added an additional 40 cases of COVID-19 since yesterday. That brings us to a total of 1,381 cases across the county with 35 fatalities. 168 of the cases are originated out of the Canejo Valley. Across the county, this equates to 120 new cases since Friday. And so there is some concern amongst local public health officials regarding that uptick, particularly in hospitalizations, which we've seen that hospital number go up to 39 currently hospitalized across the county with 12 in the ICU. So they're going to be watching that very closely in the coming days. A portion of the uptick over the weekend is an outbreak that originated out of a senior living facility in Ventura. And that's responsible for about 21 of the new cases and a number of the newly hospitalized. Testing capacity has increased significantly, as I've mentioned, in recent weeks. And folks can access testing without being symptomatic now. And the county has tested over 33,000 individuals to date. Recovery numbers do continue to tick upward. 1,045 have now fully recovered, and we have just over 300 people that are under active quarantine right now. Just a few additional updates. The governor, as I've mentioned in recent weeks, continues to issue guidance by sector. And we're working carefully with the county to bring those different business sectors online as they are able to do so. He issued guidance in over a dozen areas last Friday and this week, different sectors from gyms and family entertainment centers to summer camps and hotels. So the county and the public health director are working right now to make their issuance in those various areas. So it is up to the county to review those different guidelines that are laid out by the state and review where their numbers are as a county and make determinations as to when they're going to greenlight those various sectors to reopen. As a city, we continue to be dedicated to working closely with the county. As soon as these sectors are released, we're trying our best to get these folks aware and prepared to move forward in reopening. Our Canejo Chamber is continuing to work through their Canejo Valley Small Business Economic Task Force to provide support to our local businesses. The county of Ventura, via VCCF, is using some CARES Act funding to establish a business assistance fund of their own. And so that's an additional resource that will be available and advertised pretty widely. We do continue to work on a city-by-city basis with 10 cities in the county working closely on our response. And we're in daily contact, my colleagues in various cities and county officials, as this very much is a regional response. With that, I'll wrap up my comments with just a reminder. Stay up to date at vceemergency.com. If you've got questions about anything COVID-related locally, you can find that information there. You can track down testing locations, and there's new spots that are added on almost a weekly basis right now. A lot of those are drive-up facilities, some with no appointment needed. So if you need to get tested, you have access to get tested. And then locally here, tooaks.org/covid19, we continue to produce local content here and keep you up to date.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. And as you make your way through the city, I'm sure many of you noticed, pardon me, that we are slowly starting to reopen. You see evidence of that at the Oaks Mall. The Oaks Mall has reopened cautiously with precautions. We have restaurants that have reopened with some outdoor seating that we agreed to allow in just a meeting or so ago. However, the numbers still persist, so I would ask everyone to remain cautious in their daily life and as they move through the city. And I think that's still an important part of life here in Thousand Oaks. All right, very good. Next up, I am pleased to have with us this evening our Ventura County Sheriff, Bill Ayub. And Bill's going to give us a report on things. Bill, are you with us?
I think I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Perfect. Well, good evening, Mayor Adam.
We got you on video, too.
Mr. Powers. Thank you for that. A pleasure to be here with you this evening. We've had a trying time over the last three months or so, as I know that you know, being involved with the COVID response, trying to protect our inmate population, our deputies in the community, and maintaining order in the community with the imposition of health orders that we haven't seen in 100 years in this country. So interesting time, challenging for our public and for us, for sure. As you know, on May 25th, we saw an incredible abuse of police authority. I wouldn't even call it authority, just a misuse of police power in Minneapolis, and the death of George Floyd. We saw a police officer kneeling on the man's neck for well over eight minutes while others looked on and didn't fulfill their duty of intervening to stop that abhorrent behavior. And Mr. Floyd died subsequently at the hands of those officers. And because of their inactivity or activity, depending on who you're speaking of, this, of course, brought like racial tensions simmer in communities around the country for hundreds of years, really. And in addition to the police cities, or at least, you know, in relationship to civil rights and equity of treatment and fairness in the justice system, all very important points and things that we strive for here in Ventura County. Since that time, we've seen worldwide demonstrations, in some places, civil unrest with violence and looting and destructive behavior, things we tried to keep out of the community through proactive work with organizers, administrations approached Ventura County. Not only with the sheriff's office, the municipal police departments has been one of strong support for those interested in exercising their first amendment rights. And one of which we try to provide a statement for that while protecting the public from those who want to use the cover of peaceful demonstrations for bad behavior, looting, destruction, violence. And we had a number of concerns about that type of activity coming into the communities. We have a number of different intelligence channels that we monitor regularly, and we paid close attention to the civil unrest in our neighboring Los Angeles County. And we had some very significant concerns about looting that was planned or called for in Ventura County. And we staffed accordingly in an appropriate way, I think, not in a manner which should frighten our public, but one where it should be responsive to hopefully prevent a serious act of criminal behavior occurring before it even started. And so whether we're successful at it because of our planning or just in how, we're fortunate that we have very few incidents related to many protests, demonstrations we've seen countywide. And we continue to see those. For the most part, all in peaceful, we've seen a little bit of minor graffiti vandalism, different places throughout the county, a little bit of violent behavior, you could say, in Thousand Oaks. When we had a motorist who perhaps did agree with what was said at a demonstration at the area of Lynn and Hillcrest, decided to pepper spray a protester, and he caused a bit of upheaval in our own community. And so fortunately, we were able to identify that person, take quick action, and justice will be served in that case. Since that time, of course, many questions have surfaced, including locally, about the likelihood, possibility of the type of behavior we saw in Minneapolis occurring here. We're trying to make sure that we have what kind of policies we have placed to make sure that doesn't happen. And I'm very happy to speak about that. And I am very proud of the men in that police communities. We are very fortunate here to have well-funded sheriff's offices and municipal police firms, for the most part, that allow us to attract and retain some best and brightest people in the police profession here. And that's an important, I mean, that's the most important piece of it. But I want to talk particularly about the type of training our deputies get in relationship to treating people fairly as well as use of force. There's a great deal of overlap there. Every sheriff's, police officers in our communities have a great deal of power and trust in them. And they do deal with people that need to be held accountable for bad behavior, sometimes brought to jail. And many of those people don't want to come. And so it's a challenge to get a grown 250-pound man into a set of handcuffs if that person didn't want to be there. And so we have a lot of training and de-escalation techniques, a lot of training and defensive tactics that we use by and large every day successfully with very few incidents of use of force. In fact, I can tell you that we average, and this is based on the previous five years, more than 200,000 citizen contacts. And those are incidents where there could be multiple people that we contact. And those are actually fairly low numbers based on our accounting. And of those contacts, less than 1/3, 1% result in any type of force whatsoever being used. And of those incidents, those few incidents of use of force, we have just a handful that result in any type of serious injury to an officer or to a person being taken into custody. So it's a rarity locally to see a significant use of force on a member of the public. But our deputies receive 30 hours of mandated training on cultural diversity, discrimination, and our base community class. Every sworn member of the department, those are all deputy sheriffs, has periodic updates on biased-based policing, on discrimination and sexual harassment, and on developing cultural competency and inclusion. We also require every one of our deputy sheriffs to review certain key policies annually. Some of those policies include our policy conduct and ethics, policy on use of force, on handling critical incidents, biased-based policing, hate crimes, discriminatory harassment, and many others. We also strive to train each and every one of our deputy sheriffs on what we call crisis intervention team principles. And those are psychological principles of interacting with people in crisis, including people that have mental health disorders, up to and including those on the spectrum for autism. That includes de-escalation techniques. We've been doing this program for years. 92% of our deputies are currently trained. We want 100%, and we're striving to get there. But we've seen a precipitous decline in dissonance complaints, use of force incidents, and injurities that will result in use of force incidents. So it's a tremendous local program, one that serves our community very well. My agency has a duty to intervene policy. Something you saw in Minneapolis was three officers, two of which we understand were brand-new on field training, but three officers looking on as the fourth officer, and it's scheduled to burn George Floyd by kneeling on his neck. And here, we, you know, it's part of our organizational culture, we require deputies to take action, we give them added training, we reinforce it on their, the importance of stepping in, they see another deputy with bad behavior, using force. This job is tough. This job is tough, sometimes emotions can get carried away, and we need fuller heads to reveal and prevent things like that from happening here. And most importantly, the reason we have a success, and I alluded to it when I first started speaking, is the caliber of individual that we hire to be a deputy sheriff with our agency. We look the best and brightest out of every 100 people that applies to be deputy sheriff with us, see the graduate day through a police academy. Our rigorous hiring process includes multiple examinations, including polygraph examination, lighting test, and the psychological examination, as well as a incredibly comprehensive background disposition. We're known to exhibit biases, prejudices. Those are things that we're not interested in, amongst our deputy ranks. We fight to keep that type of individual out of our rank and file. That is one of the ways we keep our efforts in step with our community expectations are, in step with the culture of our organization, and striving to serve our communities the best way possible. I have posted a list of frequently asked questions we've received, as I'm sure some of the council members have, questions related to use of force and demands from activist organizations to reform use of force policies. Many of those questions are answered on a frequently asked questions page that we posted on our publishing website, adventuresheriff.org. It's in the center of the first page. It says policies and FAQs. If any interested member of the public wants to see what our policy is for virtually any type of matter of policing that we engage in, that can be found on that page, as well as these frequently asked questions that answer a lot of questions the public has had related to use of force training and how we operate locally in Ventura County. And I'm open to any questions you want to have. Thank you for having me here this evening.
Thank you, Sheriff Ayub. Appreciate you being here. Thank you for the conscientious performance of your duties, and your forces exhibited patience and empathy and vigilance at the same time. And I also want to thank our citizens for the peaceful behavior that they've demonstrated over the past couple of weeks. It's much appreciated. And I want to thank Chief of Police Jim Freihoff and Deputy Don Aguilar for working so well with our community. That's much appreciated as well. My fellow councilmembers, do you have questions or comments for Sheriff Ayub?
Yes. Yes?
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
I think my microphone may be a bit low.
There we go. We got you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sheriff Ayub, I just wanted to thank you for giving us a brief, nonetheless detailed presentation of your policies. And I think that those policies that you have been implementing or on display during the several protests that we have seen in Ventura County, particularly in Thousand Oaks. And I wanted to publicly acknowledge that your techniques and policies are working and that you have, in your force, present and past, chiefs such as Tim Hagel, Commander Hagel, and now Freihoff, and chiefs before them, who have taken police into a different or policing into a different direction altogether. And that is really being a community liaison and building a partnership with at-risk youth. And I believe that that will really bear fruit in the future. It is already bearing fruit. And so, this is the forward-thinking, progressive thinking that Ventura County Sheriff's Department has had by implementing policies that move away from violence and aggression, and really more toward being a social worker, including the vulnerable populations, officers who deal with the homeless people. So, I really have to commend you and your department and the men and women in Thousand Oaks who wear the badge and protect us 24 hours a day for being forward-thinking and taking policing to the next level.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor Bob Angler here.
Councilmember Angler, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I want to just echo some of what the Mayor Protem spoke with. I thought that your officers were very active and in a way that helped let our demonstrators get their point across in a very peaceful way. My hat is off both to you and to our people who walk down our streets and daily protested this terrible event. There's credit to go around. Your group of officers are part of that credit, and I thank you personally and on behalf of the city for that. Do you have, we have our at-risk population officers that are helping. Is there any other specific things you can point to in Thousand Oaks that is particularly progressive in how you have built a relationship with our community?
So, thank you, councilmember, for bringing that up. And Mayor Protem, I appreciate that. That's a whole nother section of discussion that I didn't bring up. We, part of our success and a large part of it has to do with the relationships we have formed in our community. And we build those in good times so that in the rough times, they're maybe not so, you know, as rough as they are in other places. And there was, someone touched on our innovative programs with the youth in Thousand Oaks in particular. And we had a couple neighborhoods that were problematic for us, a lot of calls for service, some gang activity, drugs, and some other things. And the Safe Passage Program was born out of trying to figure out a way to deal with those neighborhoods. How do we minimize the police, the negative police presence in those communities and work at a way in which we can, in which we can prevent things from happening in the first place? So, our goal, you know, if we don't have to arrest anybody ever again, it'd be absolutely terrific. We could prevent all the crime from happening, similar to the looting and vandalism. We just didn't want it to happen to begin with. We worked hard to prevent it from even starting. If we can do that with crime in general, that's a terrific thing. I think everybody would agree. And we are trying to do that through building those relationships, through getting involved with our youth. Our Safe Passage Program serves hundreds of youth in the Caneo Valley. It's been especially beneficial throughout this pandemic, helping support with antibody testing, with feeding youth and family members from underserved neighborhoods. We have a good deal of activities with our youth through our Police Explorer Program and our Volunteers in Policing Program that are active with our youth programs in addition to our employed staff. So, we try and get out into the community and talk with our civic organizations. We're active with the Chamber, with the Rotary Clubs, and with the other groups that allow us to connect with community and business leaders, all with the idea of being involved in relationship-building and growing in a positive way. Policing tends to be kind of negative, you know, by its nature. We're called to incidents where something very bad typically has happened to someone, or we're taking enforcement action. And, you know, nobody likes to see a police car with blinking lights behind them in their car. And rather than having our only contacts with the public be in those situations, we really look for opportunities to interact with the public and talk about who we are and what we do, and learn from them what's important to them or what may not be working, at least in terms of the way we're doing business, from their perspective in the community. Coffee with the Chief is another example of just efforts to connect with the community and let them know who we are and what we're all about and hear from them.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Protem. Go ahead.
I think that Councilmember Jones wanted to say something as well, but before he does that, I just wanted to also emphasize that the relationships that are being nurtured through Safe Passage and perhaps other programs really focus on communities that are of color. And so, I really wanted to highlight that, that the relationship between police and residents of our community of color have improved significantly, and we take culture and being culturally sensitive very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, let me just add another word of commendation. We have a nearby sheriff's department that, you know, their motto on their car says to protect and to serve. I think the motto here is not only to protect and to serve, but it's also to communicate. And I think our deputies are doing a great job of that. I remember a former sheriff many years ago who said when the deputies were doing a neighborhood patrol, he'd like to see him get out and throw a ball, go back and forth with some of the people out there that may be playing catch. Anyway, I would just like to, again, commend you for that Safe Passages Program. I was on the park board when we went into that in cooperation with the city. And I'd like to call out former councilman Price. He was very, very active in that. And I think that's just an example of the teamwork that we've had, you know, I think since our inception as a city. And I'd just like to say, Sheriff, you're continuing that tradition very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. And thank you, Sheriff Ayub. Oh, and our city manager would like to make a comment. Go ahead, please.
Just wanted to take a minute to thank Sheriff Ayub for taking the time to speak. As Thousand Oaks is the largest contract agency represented by the Ventura County Sheriff's Department, as Councilmember Jones just referenced, we have a long history of working closely with them. But the Sheriff's Department is under the elected control of the elected sheriff. And one of the things I've appreciated most, my conversations with Bill over these recent weeks, has been his commitment to continual evolution of the Sheriff's Department and continuing that tradition of listening and being engaged and adapting the department accordingly. And that's really what our organization is about and really what we seek in this unique moment right now, is a partner in law enforcement that's going to help to have us continue to evolve as that contract partner moving forward. So, I just wanted to share those thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. And thank you for being here, Sheriff Ayub. Appreciate your presence here tonight and those good words. It really is all about relationships, whether you're in the private secular world or in the law enforcement world. It's getting along with people, and I know you try so hard with that. You're really partnering with our community to keep us all safe, and we're very appreciative. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you all.
And now, we will move on to our public comments. If you would announce that, please. Ms. Rodriguez?
This is a time and place for public comments. For those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction, all remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Six individuals have requested to speak, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. And if you state your name and city of residence, we will get started with Evan Gordon. We're going to hold up on that. Okay, let us then go to Adam Haverstock.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, for having me this evening. My name is Adam Haverstock. I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism for the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce with a couple updates for you. First, I wanted to talk about the Caneo Valley Small Business Relief Fund. I know the members of the council know quite a bit about this already, but for the public's benefit, the Chamber's foundation is going to be funding micro grants of up to $2,500 for small businesses in Thousand Oaks, Westlake Village, and Agora Hills, and small businesses defined as 25 or fewer employees. To date, we have received over 60 applications from businesses within the city of Thousand Oaks for this fund, and the first round of funding will be distributed at the end of this week. I wanted to say thank you to the Thousand Oaks City Council for your contribution of $20,000 to this fund at the last meeting to support Thousand Oaks businesses. So, thank you. And we're still accepting applications. We anticipate another round of funding after this one, and we're continuing to collect donations at caneochamber.org for this fund. The Chamber of Commerce is going to be starting a Shop Caneo campaign. This is a local initiative to support our local business community. As businesses begin to reopen, we want to make sure that local residents prioritize supporting local business to bring back jobs and increase business and tax revenue for our local economy. A campaign has a website under development, and it will also include paid advertisements, email campaigns, press releases, social media, video content, and more. I wanted to mention the Chamber's 40 Under 40 Awards. We made the announcement of the members of the fifth class of 40 Under 40 honorees this past Friday. Honorees came from business, local government, education, public safety, and the nonprofit sector. And there were many from Thousand Oaks. A couple I'll mention, Julie Spivak from Caneo Recreation and Park District, Deputy Josh Richter, and Deputy Kevin Aldridge from the Thousand Oaks Police Department, Kira Kurkowski, and Britt Hutchinson from Caneo Valley Unified School District, and Lisa Lopez and Megan Moreno from Los Robles Health System, and there were many more. There will not be an in-person event this year due to the coronavirus, but we thought it was important as ever to be recognizing young professionals doing great work in our community. And then finally, I wanted to talk about our first event since the coronavirus pandemic. We're going to be having our annual economic forecast. It's going to be on Friday, July 11th in the morning. It's going to be a virtual event from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m., and it's going to include an economic forecast presented by Dr. Matthew Fineup, the Executive Director for the Center of Economic Research and Forecasting at California Lutheran University. Tickets for that event are going to be free for Chamber members and $25 for non-members, and they will be for sale shortly at our website, caneochamber.org. And unless there are any questions, that does conclude my comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. And next up, Karen Martin. You're good to go, Karen.
Good evening, Karen Martin, Thousand Oaks, California. I'm here this evening, Mayor and councilmen, to ask you to delay the enlargement of the helipad at Los Robles Hospital to allow military-grade Black Hawk helicopters to land until a valid noise study can be done. I understand the importance of trauma and stroke centers and the need for speed and treatment, but the impact of the residents cannot be evaluated with this current information. We can only manage what we measure. If we don't measure, we are only guessing. We are being told that there will not be an increase in flight, yet there is no mention of the average yearly flight currently. Since this affects the CNEL, which is the baseline noise level, the study is invalid. It will also be helpful to have a breakdown of the percent of flight by each type of helicopter and time of day, day, evening, and night, as they are weighted differently, also affecting the impact on the community. Another incongruity is that the noise levels that were measured are lower than the 2008 study done by the hospital prior to becoming a trauma center. I do not believe this to be true. We have helicopters flying low, making a lot of noise already, so something's not right here. It appears that three of the four sites that were measured were not considered sensitive because they were mostly surrounded by commercial uses. Perhaps sites should be chosen to reflect the effect of the holes in the flight path. There was no C-weighted study. The FAA requires the Integrated Noise Model Version 7 for Civil Aviation Noise Events. This includes vibrational indices. While the Planning Council has assured us there will be no added vibration, there's been no measurement to prove that logic. I understand there will be new lighting for night flights. Is there a mock-up so we can see what the impact will have on the neighborhood? We're also being told there will be no effect on property value. I believe if you are in a helicopter flight path, you have to disclose. I would appreciate a neighborly approach to solutions to the noise in this area. approach to solutions to the noise in this area. The city has solutions within its grasp in the form of the noise element. It accounts for increasing noise levels within the community by mitigation by businesses that are enlarging to increase profitability. This money is then used to increase patrol, build sound walls, and purchase equipment to improve the quality of life of its citizens. The hospital could be a good neighbor. They should keep a log of transports, including transport provider, helicopter type, date and time of arrival, departures, and the flight path. They could also work with pilots to fly over non-inhabited areas and replace aging helicopters with quieter modules. We just don't have the information. And I've contacted the FAA. They are not responding to why Version 7 was not done.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you very much. Next up, we have Audrey Bruckner. You're on, Audrey.
Thank you so much. My name is Audrey Bruckner. I am from Thousand Oaks. And good evening, everyone. I am strongly opposed to the implementation of HR 6666, also known as the Trace Act. It is in direct opposition to God's law and will have an extremely negative effect on the genetics and brain function of future generations. I do not give permission for any of my tax money to finance such destructive and draconian policies. Let us follow the real golden rule of universal truth. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you, instead of the modern-day false co-opted one of he who has the gold makes the rules. The only thing to fear is fear itself. Rather than allowing such harmful and deceptive agendas to continue to manipulate, divide, and destroy us, we need to focus on uniting to rebuild a healthy society and world that will enable everyone to thrive. We can do this once we unite with a common purpose. I challenge us all to empower ourselves with the vision of the world we want to live in and work toward that goal by first healing, forgiving, and loving ourselves, and then extending this out to all others. We can do this. The real power is in the hands of the peoples of the earth united, and the time is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Next up, we have Paige Murphy. No, we don't. So that is fine. So now we will go to Daniel Twede. Daniel, just a moment. Go ahead, Daniel.
Hi, I'm Daniel Twede. I live in Thousand Oaks. Want to thank mayor, councilmembers, and engaged citizens, and appreciate this public comment period. What I wanted to address was I know that Thousand Oaks is a leader in sustainability and green practices. And I know we all love our beautifully landscaped properties, but there is a move afoot, I think, at the state level to increase the regulation of gas-powered landscaping equipment, like leaf blowers and lawn mowers. And I think, you know, Westlake Village actually already has some guidance about using this certain times, and they're subject to certain other guidance. Ojai, in fact, is a nearby city that has an outright ban on that kind of equipment. But anyway, the there was actually a webinar today at the Resources Board about their pre-rulemaking workshop to go to zero emission equipment. And maybe Thousand Oaks wants to get out ahead of the curve and institute some guidance in advance of that. I know there's already 60 cities in California that have adopted partial or total bans of the they're called SOAR, small off-road engines. They're spark ignition engines under 16 kilowatt equivalent, I believe. And I think, you know, there's 16 million of these kinds of engines in California, and they are awfully polluting. In fact, one hour of running a leaf blower is like driving your car to Las Vegas. It generates that much pollution. So and they're noisy. I think they lower our quality of life. There's there's electric models that are, you know, zero emission equipment or Z. And I think there's credits available for transitioning to those. And it would just be great to see the city, you know, do some green leadership on this issue. And I know there's a lot of people in the community that like the idea. Some of them don't like it, but maybe a petition would would help create some incentive for the council to at least do a study and see about adopting something in advance of the statewide actions which are supposedly coming in 2022. But I know I would appreciate not hearing the noise and whatnot from those landscapers. So thanks again. I hope you can take some action on that issue.
Thank you for those remarks, Daniel. And that does conclude our public comment section. And we'll go to our city manager for a follow-up.
Thanks so much, Mayor Adam. Just to follow up on a couple of quick things. Speaker regarding the helicopter landing pad at Los Robles Hospital, the as some folks may be aware, the sheriff's department and Ventura County Fire Department have upgraded their helicopters. They have two new Black Hawk helicopters that are have been outfitted. And with that, hospitals across county are making upgrades to their landing pad areas, their existing landing pads, just not not a new landing pad in order to accommodate some of the additional weight that goes with these helicopters. So that's what that item is about. It did go to admin hearing last week. It was appealed to admin hearing. It was approved out of admin hearing. So the item regarding HR 6666, that's a federal Secretary of Housing Human Services. It's legislation that deals with providing grants to entities to conduct diagnostic testing for COVID-related items. Federal legislation, so it's outside of the city's jurisdiction. I'd encourage anyone concerned about that to reach out to their representative for us. That would be Julia Brownlee. And then on the issue of leaf blowers, something that has come up from time to time, as the speaker alluded to at the end, there's a strong viewpoints on both sides of this issue. We do hear from time to time about state legislation in action. And so we're very closely monitoring that. We'll have staff touch base with that speaker as well. That's it for my response.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. All right, let's move on to the consent calendar. Any items to pull, my fellow councilmembers? Hearing none. May I get a motion, please?
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
All right, Councilmember Jones moves approval. Can we take a vote, please?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Adam?
And yes, for me. And we have a second reading?
Yes, Mayor, that motion passes 4-0. And your ordinance title is an ordinance amending Thousand Oaks Municipal Code Title 1, Chapter 8, Adding Section 1-8.130, Authorizing the Use of Electronic Signatures, Ordinance Number 1679 NS.
Thank you very much. All right, let us go to our public hearing for the evening, a TEFRA hearing. And if you would open that hearing, Ms. Rodriguez?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A regarding California Enterprise Development Authority revenue obligations for the benefit of Hillcrest Christian Center of Thousand Oaks. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. One individual has presented a speaker card, and pursuant to council standards, the speakers will each speaker will have five minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. And I believe our Finance Director, Ms. Jamie Bascarino, will give us the report this evening.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Adam, councilmembers. Tonight, we are holding a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act public hearing, also known as TEFRA, for Hillcrest Christian Center of Thousand Oaks. Representatives available for questions tonight are Karen Winter, the head of Hillcrest Christian School, Michelle Stevens from the California Association for Local Economic Development, which operates the California Enterprise Development Authority, Sam Basely, a partner at Cutec Rock in Bond Council, and Josh Winter, the financial advisor from Western Solutions. Hillcrest Christian Center is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and operates Hillcrest Christian School, an accredited school serving preschool through 12th grade in Thousand Oaks. The school was established in 1977. The K-12 school campus is currently located at 384 Erbs Road, and the preschool campus is at 101 North Skyline Drive. Hillcrest Christian Center is in need of financing for the acquisition and improvements of various educational facilities, which may include classrooms, a music room, dance room, offices, cafeteria, parking lot, and playground. Hillcrest Christian Center plans to finance its project with tax-exempt debt in a maximum amount of $25 million issued by the California Enterprise Development Authority on behalf of Hillcrest Christian Center. The California Enterprise Development Authority is a JPA created to assist local governments and nonprofits with economic development and the issuance of tax-exempt debt that provides a public benefit and serves the needs of the residents within its jurisdictions. The city is one of approximately 200 associate member cities and counties of the JPA. Per the requirements of the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, in order for the interest on a bond issuer loan to qualify as tax-exempt, a public hearing is required to be held by an elected board of a governmental unit, and the governmental unit must approve the issuance of the debt. Since the California Enterprise Development Authority Board is not an elected body, and the authority is not a governmental unit located in the area in which the project is located, Hillcrest Christian Center requested that the city hold the hearing, as the city council is an elected body and the project location is within the city's jurisdiction. The city is only responsible to hold the TEFRA public hearing, which we are currently doing, and approve the authority's issuance of the debt via resolution. The city most recently held a TEFRA public hearing last July on behalf of the Bella Vista Apartments on Los Feliz Drive, and also for CLU back in July 2018. None of the actions taken tonight by the city council obligates the city in any way to provide any financing, nor does it obligate the city to make any debt payments on the debt. The debt is the sole responsibility of Hillcrest Christian Center. The city will have no financial or legal obligations or any responsibilities with regards to payment of the debt. Staff recommends that city council conduct the public hearing, and after the public hearing is closed, to adopt the resolution approving the issuance of the debt. And again, representatives are available if you have any questions.
All right, very good. Thank you, Ms. Bascarino. Any questions, councilmembers?
Yes, I have a quick question.
Councilmember Engler.
Thank you. Ms. Bascarino, I realize that we're not encumbering the city in any kind of debt. Are we making comments tonight on the on the project itself, or is this simply a way of approving the organization to go out and get the get the bonds?
Yeah, this is more just an opportunity for the public to make comments, since city council can hold public hearings. This is a way for any public members out in our community to be able to make any comments on the issuance of the debt. So it's not so much a way for city council to make their comments on whether they like or don't like the project. It's really more of a way for the public out there to make their own comments.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Yeah, I mean, this hearing, really, the sole purpose enables the debt to be tax exempt. And that is, in exchange for that benefit, Hillcrest will pay Hillcrest Christian will pay a lower rate than they would normally because of the benefit of it being tax exempt. And our hearing tonight allows that to happen. All right, I believe we have a speaker, and that is Thomas Means. Are you there, Thomas? Be just a moment. And you're on, Thomas.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me. My name is Tom Means. I'm a resident of Moore Park, and I'm a business owner in Thousand Oaks. And my stepdaughter is a former student at Hillcrest Christian School. And I do not want to be making this call today, but I feel compelled to bring forth an important racial consideration before Thousand Oaks authorizes using taxpayer dollars or authorizes taxpayer dollars. As I mentioned, we had to pull my stepdaughter from the school based on their educational teachings and what we found to be unacceptable. In this racially aware time that we are in, I wanted to just bring to your attention by reading from her fifth grade textbook, an excerpt, the textbook's called Heritage Studies, Fourth Edition, Five for Fifth Graders. The topic is on European interaction with Native American people, including slavery, genocide, stealing of lands, et cetera, against these indigenous people. And it's supported by the following quote. The textbook for these children reads, "Yet, like everyone else in the world, the Native American peoples were sinners in need of God's salvation. They needed to understand that only Jesus Christ could free them of their fear of spirits and give them eternal life. Only then could their story have a truly happy ending." This textbook so outraged our family that they were using justification for slaughtering and enslaving indigenous people. And everybody is entitled to their own opinion and their own education, and we made our decision for that education as well. But mixing public funds with a private institution with these kinds of teachings is something that I think should be strongly considered or at least asking the school and the organization about before we move forward with this project. I would love to see the better development in this area, especially for schools. And if Hillcrest is going to come in line with some of those teachings, I'd be thrilled to support it. But I thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you, Mr. Means. All righty.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I think the caller, I don't know, at least if I understand what we're doing correctly, is that we're simply authorizing them to sell these bonds. I don't leave pardon that on the screen there. I don't know what to do about it. We're not taking a stand on the curriculum of this school.
That is correct, Mr. Jones. And Ms. Bascarino has a comment as well.
Thank you, Mayor Adam. There are zero public funds, zero taxpayer dollars that are involved in this project. As I mentioned in my presentation, the city has no responsibility or liability for any of the debt payments on the bonds. So I just want to emphasize no taxpayer money is involved in this.
That's right. That's right. We are not expending any taxpayer money on this project.
I do have a question, Mayor Adam.
Yes, Mayor Protam, go ahead, please.
If the school were not to request this hearing, would they have to then pursue a loan with a commercial creditor or bank?
Ms. Bascarino, would you like to answer that?
If they weren't having a TEFRA hearing, then they would not be able to issue tax-exempt debt.
Right, that's the whole, again, that's the whole crux of this meeting, that the bond interest that they issue will be tax-exempt, which is attractive to buyers of a bond. And in exchange for that benefit, they're able to pay a little less interest than they would on a taxable basis. But as Ms. Bascarino said, there is no expenditure of taxpayer funds here involved. And as Mr. Jones said, there's no judgment on the project itself. This is really a perfunctory hearing. This is really a perfunctory hearing to allow the bonds to be tax-free interest, and that is it.
I, I understand. Thank you. It, it does give me peace of mind, but of course, Hillcrest Christian dictates its own curriculum, and hopefully it will be all-inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. All right, I don't believe there's any more questions, anything from staff further? Then I'm going to close this hearing. And if there is no discussion, I'm going to ask for a motion, please.
Mayor, I still move that we approve the recommendation.
Thank you, Councilmember Engler. We have a motion on the floor. Take a vote, please.
Councilmember Engler?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protam, Bill de la Peña?
Yes, and hopefully Native Americans will not be portrayed as sinners. Thank you.
Mayor Adam?
Yes.
The motion carries four zero.
All right, thank you very much. And now we're going to move on to a department report about the election in November, and our deputy city clerk, Laura McGuire, will give that report to us. Go ahead, Ms. McGuire.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The city's general municipal election will be held on November 3, 2020, where two council members will be elected to four-year terms. Staff has prepared resolutions calling the election to elect two council members. This resolution also includes the city's policy to resolve a tie vote by lot, which was the direction provided by the city council on June 5, 2018, due to the high costs associated with special elections. A resolution also requesting the board of supervisors to consolidate the city's election with the statewide presidential election. That includes contract and payment. And also a resolution adopting candidate statement guidelines and costs. As in the past years, the League of Women Voters is also requesting approval to hold a televised city council candidate forum, which is, of course, contingent on the governor's order and theater availability. Fundraising for the election began on May 6. Candidates are required to submit a Form 501 prior to receiving or expending any funds. Contribution limits are $560 per person or committee, per the city's campaign contribution limits, limits, excuse me, which was last updated in September of 2019. The candidate nomination period begins on July 13 and concludes on August 7. If an incumbent decides not to run, the deadline is extended an additional five days to August 12. Election information is available on the city's website, where various information can be found related to voter registration, polling locations, vote-by-mail drop-off centers, and campaign disclosures. Per the governor's executive order, the November election will be an all-vote-by-mail election. All voters will receive a vote-by-mail ballot in the mail, including a prepaid postage-return envelope. Polling locations will be provided throughout the city and will be available from Saturday, October 31, through Monday, November 2, for at least eight hours each day, and of course, also on Election Day, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Vote-by-mail drop-off locations will also be available 12 hours a day from October 6 through Election Day, November 3. Staff's recommendation this evening is that city council adopt recommendations 1 through 5, as listed in the staff report and seen in the presentation tonight. That concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire. Questions for staff? All right, hearing none. Then if there is no questions or discussions, I would be looking for a motion.
I'll move approval, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We have a motion on the floor. If we vote, please.
Councilmember Engler?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protam, Bill de la Peña?
Mayor Protam, are you there?
I'm a cur absent.
I am, I am, I am. Sorry, I find the button.
There you go.
Yes.
Mayor Adam?
And I'm a yes.
That motion carries four zero.
All right, very good. Thank you. And now we go on to our final department report, and that is on a municipal code amendment regarding residential development, and our deputy community development director, Kelvin Parker, will be giving that report. Good evening, Mr. Parker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. So this item here this evening is an initiation of a municipal code amendment. The request specifically relates to potential updates of zoning code regulations, objective design standards, inclusionary housing, non-residential linkage fee definitions, and updates to reflect changes in state law. To give you some brief background on this, the municipal code has a provision that allows city council to initiate code amendments. These code amendments will ultimately go to the planning commission for a recommendation to come back to city council, and city council will have the final ability to take final action on any proposed amendment. The Housing Accountability Act is a state law designed to promote infill development by reducing timelines for housing approvals. The Housing Crisis Act of 2019 strengthened the Housing Accountability Act. Together, these two bills redefine regulations for housing development for review of projects in California. Part of what those regulations do is they require cities to only evaluate qualifying residential projects using objective design standards. Currently, the municipal code contains both subjective and objective standards. Examples of subjective standards would be development standards for RPDs or residential plan developments. This section of the code uses phrases like "unless otherwise specifically waived" or "modified by the commission." Under current law, any standards imposed in this manner are inapplicable. Another example can be found for our precise plan of design guidelines. It uses phrases such as "should provide visual interests." Phrases like this would have to be redefined to be an objective standard that leaves no judgment of what can be expected by the city for development. Without adoption of objective development standards, the city has limited ability to effectively regulate design of most residential development projects. Examples of these objective design standards would include terms like "shall" instead of "should." For instance, requirements for 360-degree architecture on all elevations inclusive of primary colors and materials shall be used. Or callouts for at least two materials shall be used on building frontages. In 2008, the city adopted Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. This requires specific percentage of affordable housing or payment of an in-lug fee for development projects in Thousand Oaks. This ordinance required 10% of for-sale projects only to be available at the moderate income level. There was no fee for apartments, and it didn't take into consideration low-income categories such as extremely low, very low, or low. In 2009, the city council set an in-lug fee at zero. As such, new projects are not required to provide specific number of affordable units through this mechanism. Staff recommends that this regulation be reexamined to provide city council feedback on proposed potential changes. Evaluations of this ordinance will require the city to hire a consultant to determine what the appropriate percentage or level of income would be. The non-residential linkage fee is another mechanism to provide affordable housing by requiring applicable projects to pay a fee to be used for the production, preservation, or rehabilitation of affordable housing units. In 2019, this fee was set at zero, primarily due to the recession. Therefore, those regulations currently do not apply. Staff believes this warrants reevaluation in conjunction with the Inclusionary Housing Some terms in the municipal code could be reworded to clarify them. For instance, the term "design review" is used for minor development proposals, but it's not clearly defined. Or another example would be in our permitted use matrix to add some definition to help with clarity or remove some symbols that remain from previous revisions that are currently undefined. Amendments of this nature would go, would be brought back to city council periodically as time permits to help fix some of those cleanup items in the zoning code. State laws continue to evolve and necessitate updates to local regulations. Staff monitors and evaluates these changes and will propose amendments to city council as appropriate. Staff will bring these amendments forward to council from time to time. Example, some of the cleanup items would be, say, the public noticing requirement. Staff has a practice that we use, but it exceeds what's currently written in the code. So something like this would be brought up to date to match what our current practice These would be simple amendments that would bring the city's regulations into compliance with state law. This proposal complies with city council goals B and H by providing clarity in the zoning code and by streamlining processes which support our business community. Next steps should the city council initiate this MCA would be for staff to research, analyze, and prepare draft amendments. Priority on this project will be placed on objective development standards. Then the planning commission will make a, will review these proposed changes, make a recommendation to city council, and then will ultimately come back to this body for final action. In conclusion, staff recommends that city council adopts this municipal code amendment, thereby authorizing staff to evaluate changes to certain regulations in the zoning code requiring residential development standards, including inclusionary housing, the non-residential linkage fee program, definitions, and code amendments to reflect changes in state law. That concludes staff's presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Any questions?
Yes, I do.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you so much, Mayor Adam. What is the timetable? I'm sorry, I was changing rooms. What is the timetable for this initiation?
The initiation would come back in phases. First up would more than likely be the objective standards, and we would hope to bring that back to council later this year, perhaps in the fall.
Will that affect or impact any projects that are currently under review by the city or only future projects?
No, it wouldn't affect future projects. The current projects under review have, are being reviewed under current standards right now. We haven't had anyone request review under objective standards.
Okay, and we will hire a consultant for this, as you said, to help us with this process?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protam. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, Bob, Bob Engler here, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Engler.
Thank you. Yes, Kelvin, thank you for your presentation. A quick point of clarification, as, as you come forward with changes to the code, you would be coming to us for each individual approval on those codes?
That is correct. However, before we come back to city council, we would have to stop by planning commission first for their recommendation.
And then, is there a sunset on this? In other words, is this something, because the state's going to be doing different things all along here, is there a sunset on this particular action we're taking, or will it be indefinite?
No, there's no sunset on the provisions that we're reviewing, and we'll continue to adjust as state law permits. As they change, so will we to remain in compliance.
And then, and then finally, I think, how does this dovetail, or does it dovetail into some of the other actions we're taking, such as our, our general plan review and our, our housing element review? Does it dovetail in, or is it completely separate?
This will primarily be separate. There may be an opportunity to include some of it together if the timing works out that way. But ideally, this will be a standalone project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Engler.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, the current procedure or the current method of having a certain amount of affordable housing and being able to take care of that with a cash payment in lieu of the affordable housing, can we eliminate that procedure so that they do have to provide the affordable housing? Or are we, do we have the ability to do that?
What I think I heard the question is, is can we require developers to build affordable housing? And that's something that can be studied as part of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. If that's the direction that council wants to take when they take final action, that's something that we can study as part of our review.
Yeah, and actually, it will be part of the study. When we originally adopted the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, we did adopt an in-lug fee, but the analysis looked at both the construction of affordable housing and a, you know, an in-lug fee. So we'll be studying both in this case as well.
Thank you, Ms. Noonan. Mr. Jones, anything further?
Well, do I understand that we would have the discretion to force them to provide the affordable housing, or can the state, you know, nullify that or goal on, on our part?
No, actually, the state has already come out and, the California Supreme Court has already determined that cities can require the construction of affordable housing. The question, however, is what does that look like? What percentage can a city do it? You still have to analyze the economics of projects to make sure that the, the requirement doesn't make a, a housing project uneconomically, uneconomic.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I think Mayor Protam wanted to say something.
Oh, go ahead.
I wanted to say that, I, I think I hear you saying that if we make that determination, that we can do that for Thousand Oaks without fear that it will be overturned by state legislation? Is that what you're saying?
What, what I'm saying is that cities who already have in place inclusionary housing ordinances, there's been a, there's been a few legal challenges to it, and the California Supreme Court has concluded that these types of ordinances are within the city's police powers. With respect to the state adopting legislation that prohibits cities from doing that, I'm not aware of any legislation that's pending that would be doing that. I would actually be surprised if they did that, because the legislature's focus for the last several years has been on construction of housing for, you know, for lower incomes.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Protam?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to find out whether we are on a schedule here that this needs to be done sooner than later, and if so, why?
The only portion of the proposed municipal code amendment that is on a tighter schedule than others is the objective standards, and that's because that portion of the state law took effect January 1, and the city is vulnerable with our code having subjective standards as well as objective in there. So we need to clean that up as soon as possible, which is why that would come back to council first.
This year or next year?
It would come back this year.
All right, very good. Thank you so much.
All right. All righty. Yeah, I'd just say this is a, actually, an important study. The state has ruled that cities have used subjective standards, words like that Mr. Parker mentioned, "visual interest." Parker mentioned, visual interest, significant articulation, semi-rural character, you know, what does that really mean? And they want us to be more objective, and that's fine. But the key here is that we're going to craft those objective standards ourselves. It gives us the ability to design the few residential projects we have left in the pipeline. We don't have a lot of developed land left, but these objective standards will enable us to regulate their design. So appreciate that. And if there's no further discussion, I'd like to ask for a vote, please, or a motion. We'll get the motion first, then we'll vote.
A vote to, a motion to approve staff recommendation?
All right. Mayor Protam has a motion on the floor. We vote, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Adam?
Yes, for me as well. All right, very good.
And that motion carries four zero.
Thank you all. And that is the rest of our agenda. Let us go to our city manager for any follow-up comments or announcements that he may have.
Thanks, Mayor Adam. The only update I have is that our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on the 23rd of June. On that evening, we have a CDBG action plan item, our levying of annual assessments out of Public Works, and organizational update on some of our organization's efforts related to the COVID-19 response. And we're anticipating some finance-related items as we close out the fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. And we have a closed session this evening, do we not?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mayor. We do have one closed session matter. It's conference with legal counsel for existing litigation, Allison Piazza versus Tony Ravelis, case number 56201800513538 pursuant to GMA Code Section 54956.9A. It is unlikely I'll have anything to report.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Noonan. All right. With that, thank you, my fellow councilmembers.
Mayor?
Oh, yes, Mayor Protam, go ahead, please.
I missed under item 11. I wanted to actually, no, under item 12, a follow-up, not necessarily on meetings and conferences, but on the Motel 6 situation, that everyone has been given notice to vacate and that the program for the homeless during COVID will end at the end of the month. So I've been volunteering there with my sons every weekend for the last six weeks or so, or four, and I just wanted to bring that to the public's attention because I see some chatter on social media. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that update, Mayor Protam. All right, ladies and gentlemen, with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. So enjoy your newfound freedom around the city, but please do it cautiously. We want to make sure that we are safe here in Thousand Oaks, but we also want to support our local businesses, so shop here in town, visit restaurants, and we'll get things rolling again. With that, I'll adjourn to June 23. Thank you.